And the only reason I know that is because uh I was actually in the first one, I thought we were going to win it so we were already pricing. I was like looking into it. I mean just straight, straight looking at it.
Uh.
And we had.
Dr. Braswell.
Are you trying to run it back? Think of now. I'd get like a little bit greater. Turn it over how to do this. Smooth. So.
But uh. She has uh Dr. Braswell. Oh, he's here.
Smooth. And then she left.
That's yeah. First night, that's what infected.
There you go. So. Okay. He was incredible in high school, but he was small.
Is there a story on that?
Oh boy.
Thank you, thank you.
Rod, you, you got it?
Try to.
Alright, okay. Good, good, good. Did we get Dr. Braswell?
He's, I got him, he did.
Oh, oh, okay, great.
Yeah, he's there.
Hey, Dr. Braswell, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay, are you feeling okay?
No, I'm hanging in there.
Yeah, I know everybody's got it, you know, so.
Yeah.
So, but thank you for calling in, thank you so much.
Sure, no, no, not a problem.
Okay, alrighty.
I'm uh, it's six o'clock, so I'm gonna call a meeting in order. Um, roll call, we have Dr. Braswell's on the phone and Kevin Thornton is out. Um, Rodney, if you don't mind, would you leave us some prayers and invitation?
Stand for the pledge, yeah. Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, our representative, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's, let's pray. Lord, we come forward this evening, also want to tell you we love you and just so thankful, Lord, for the many ways you bless us, we thank, thank you for the blessings on our school district, Lord, our recent success with our football program and all the many good things that are going on within our school district, Lord, and we just uh, ask you, Lord, just to help us as we are in this season now of celebrating the birth of your son Jesus, Lord, that we remember the reason for the season, Lord, and that's the birth of Jesus, Lord, making a way for us to have a personal relationship with you, Father, and to spend eternity with you in heaven, Lord, and thank you for all these good things. Please be with us here tonight, we'll go through about the business of our school district, Lord, every decision is made is in your will, in Jesus's name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Alright, we need a motion to uh accept minutes from the last board meeting.
Some move.
Make a motion. I make a motion when approved, the minutes from the previous board meeting.
Ms. Conley.
Second.
Okay, Dr. Braswell, Ms. Conley, second. Any questions? All in favor?
Uh.
Adoption of the agenda?
No changes.
Alright, need a motion to uh adopt the agenda as presented?
Some move.
Ms. Conley, just need a second?
A second, sir.
Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Uh.
Unanimous.
Hey, but, but you, but you do know there was a change, right? Those aren't the same agendas. There's a change, so I'm not sure if that matters, but those aren't the same two agendas.
The one printed?
The one printed and sent, I'm saying. I mean, I'm not sure, I'm not, I'm not sure if it, that's what I'm saying, I'm not sure if it matters.
Yeah, there's a couple of changes in the agenda, there's a couple items that were changed, that were added on.
But this is based on this?
Yes, it's based on that one, it's, no wonder the things that, you know, it was like recognition of.
Right, okay. Um. Old business, um, our next board meeting will be January fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, January fourteenth, twenty twenty-five. New business, uh, we'll start out with uh recognition of our six A, A champions and uh like to hear from our coach.
Yeah, we wanted, we, we wanna take a minute, Coach Fair, if you'd come up here and, and get all you guys and coaches around you and y'all come on up, guys, you bet. Coach Fair, if you'd take a second and maybe introduce everybody, let them say their names so that we can.
We, we'll do that, we've got some of our seniors tonight, a couple of our coaches and.
And we've got several guys working and, and all this kinda stuff, so we kinda, we got what we could get up here for you tonight, but it's a great representation of, of our team, so we'll just kinda go down, I'll let them introduce their names.
DJ Wesmore.
Carson Honeycutt.
I'm Caden Wender.
Frank Sam.
Zachman.
Dimitri Duro.
Ethan Door.
I'm Justin Purvis.
Chairman Tindall.
This. You guys won the end, they're not players.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, if they played the other night, we'd have to get them in the hospital, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's right, that's right.
But guys, I gotta tell you, I, I just wanna, wanna make a couple of comments, since Coach Fair has been here, um, just two years, we've gone fourteen and one this year, and um, and we've won fourteen in a row, that's pretty incredible. And um, and the work that they have done, I'm, I mean, I, I, I think that we could have beat any team in the state regardless of classification. And um, I, I had a friend of mine who sent me a text, you know, on Sunday, and he said, let me tell you something, he said, you have a, you have a, the reason that y'all are so good is because you have three things that are working real well together. One of is great coaches, all coaches, second thing is great kids, and you have an administration team that supports, you know, what's going on. And he, and he made a comment, and I knew exactly what he meant when he said, you were doing this the right way. Because I can tell you that um Coach Fair is a person that um, he's, he's all, he is so conscious of, he's, he's an incredible football coach, he, he is incredible. But he only uses football to teach kids what they need to know in life, and that is so incredibly important. So when you see this guy leading a bunch of kids, yeah, they're gonna follow, they're gonna follow what he's doing, he's doing the same thing with his great coaches, and he told me last week, he said, you know, we have a all-star cast of coaches, and he means that. And um, and I gotta tell you, last year was the first time we played for the state championship, and here we are, two years in a row, and now we have won the state championship, and that's, that is the first time ever in Grenada's history, and we are proud, 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 so give them a round of applause, please. Mike, could you say, say a few words?
Yeah, I'd love to, I, I just think that uh, you know, this group of, of young people is, is so easy to pull for, and uh, the reason that they are is because they represent this community, I think, the right way. It's a blue collar group of young people, we were outmatched the other night size-wise and speed-wise and division one offer-wise and all that, but this, these old, these old boys from Grenada had it on their mind that they wanted to do something special, and uh, and it just shows that um, what type of people we have here in Grenada. And, and one more thing, we mentioned the administration and the, and the school district and the coaches, you know, th- this is not possible without all of our arrows going in the same direction. And uh, our high school administration team and, and here in central office, and then of course our players and our, our wonderful coaches, best coaching staff I've ever been around in my life, and uh, just some great kids, and uh, when all that comes together, uh, success usually follows. And so, just really as proud as I can be to be a part of it, and uh, good group of young men right here, and if this is, I said it last night in the city council meeting, if this is the future of Grenada, we're in good hands, we got some good young men, so thank you. Yeah.
Now, does anybody wanna ask Coach Fair any questions now, you, this is your opportunity.
Y'all usually do this?
And while, thank you for all the work that you have done, is, is.
Fair makes it easy.
He does make it easy, and, and, and these guys here, man, um, Coach Tindall and Coach Purvis, thank you guys so much for all of your work in making all this happen, because it couldn't happen, it couldn't happen without great leadership, and these guys, the, the players understand that, and what heart they have.
Absolutely.
They are pretty incredible.
They are.
And so, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, yes.
Hey, Coach Fair.
Yes, sir.
Before you leave, hardball, congratulations.
Thank you.
Um, man, it's incredible, uh, being a former athlete of Grenada, it's something to be proud of, I, I played a little football, but I didn't play long. I didn't play long, so, I mean, it's just something to be extremely proud of, um, and I just can't say thank you enough, um, and I understand the work that goes into the coaching staff and to the kids, so, man, thank you, and uh, man, you know, welcome to Grenada.
Yeah.
And, and, and with that, and uh, have you all started looking at rings?
We, we are in the process, for sure.
Okay, so, when you do.
Yes, sir.
Don't go skimpy on our kids.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, don't, 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 hey, listen, this is our first one, right?
That's right.
Of many.
That's right.
So we wanna make sure that, that we do what we say we wanna do by being proud of you and supporting you, right?
Right.
So, where your, where your heart is, your treasure will be there also.
That's right.
Right, so we wanna make sure that we take care of our guys, so make sure you, don't, don't go small on it.
We'll take you, girl.
Yes, sir, thank you, coach.
Thank you, I appreciate y'all, thank you.
Wonder does a board, can we get a necklace or a rope or something, surely. We got a lapel here. Hey Rodney, we get some, right? Don't, don't we get some? Is that, is that a board member, we got lapel or something?
Never happens.
That's what I'm saying, come on. Attorney key?
It's impressive.
Yeah, I'm proud of those guys, for sure. Um. Item B on sixteen section lands, Rodney, if you don't mind, updates?
Uh, you got it pulled up there, says we got my list of folks I'm continuing to work with, one item on here that we, we'd need uh some action from you guys, and I have two sixty-one here, this reassignment of the lease, uh, this is a lease that was previously, it's been held uh by Chris Haywood, uh, Chris, we were working him last few days, uh, all the, you see the note there, he's caught up and in good standing on his, on his, on his lease. And so what we'd be doing would be, we'd be requesting you guys to approve him, like, was the assignment of this lease, he's actually sold it, let me see if I got, the assignment's a pretty short document there, but we're just basically letting the new lease of Chris Harris step into Chris Haywood's place in this lease that goes out through twenty twenty-eight, rent every year is a thousand and thirty-five dollars. I went out to Google Earth, just so if you ever riding down River Road there in Featherville, that's the, the, the house there that the guy owns, and that's our sixteen, sixteen section lot, did, did his bidding on, so that's what he's leasing from us, of course, it's just a lot, you know, he would be the owner, he showed me the build sale where he had bought a home from the, uh, from Chris Haywood. So all we'd be asking you guys is to uh approve the assignment of this surface lease, you know, the lease of that lot from uh Chris Haywood to Chris Harris.
Alright, need a motion to accept the uh reassignment?
I make a motion if we accept the reassignment.
Got a motion?
Second.
Second? Any questions? All in favor?
Uh.
Alright, uh, item C would be our personnel.
Under personnel, um, to be in, in compliance with Mississippi Code thirty-seven nine twenty-one, if you are related to any of the following, personnel will be considered and voted upon, please recuse yourself from the school board meeting until a motion and vote is taken. I'd like to make the following faculty recommendations for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, and you're gonna see a lot of um recommendations that's on this list, you're gonna see a few people that are resigning, you're gonna see transferring, you're gonna see um a couple of people, um, they're either transferring in, within the district to another job, or they could be moving from school to another school. A particular note, transferring Julie Crouch, um, and her salary is gonna be moving up those numbers that are written there, and she'd be moving in the district office um to interim business manager. And um, as we all know that Rodney is gonna be, um, leaving us at the end of the year, um, at the end of June, and um, we will be advertising for this job, for the, for the um business manager, that's gonna take place a little bit later. And um, that, that will take place a little bit later, and um, and then we'll go through the process of interviewing candidates for the job. And also, you're gonna see one person that's listed there, that is an increase in salary because her job requirements have changed, and so we ask that you please approve C one under personnel.
Hey, we, I, I don't, I don't have this, I, I don't, I don't have what we're looking at. I don't, I don't have, I don't have this sheet.
That's it, that is.
Yeah, that's, that's it, I don't have it, yeah, I don't have it.
Would you like that?
Alright, need a motion to uh accept recommendations personnel, one?
Some move.
Ms. Conley, need a second?
Thank you.
Dr. Braswell, any questions? All in favor?
No.
Alright, item D, approval of Grenada High School.
We have, we have personnel two, that's, that's alright. Um, um, I'd like to make the following faculty recommendations for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, um, this is personnel two on your laptops, and you're gonna see a couple of people, these are both teachers that would be working at the elementary school for the upcoming year, twenty-five, twenty-six. They would actually start in the middle of the year.
Need a motion to accept personnel two?
Some move.
Ms. Conley?
Make a motion.
Dr. Braswell, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous? Now we go to D, approval of Grenada High School middle college scoring tool.
Alright, and we sit this out today, but uh, with our middle college, which we're very proud of.
We, we, you know, the kids apply for it, and then we have, we've come up with the tool to, we can score, and we take the top five kids by the scoring instrument, and um, and so that's how we go about doing it, you know, and the things that are considered really are like a GPA, ACT, class rank, uh, college and career readiness, uh, first generation attendance, and um, discipline, so those things are considered, and, and they're given so many points by that, they add up the points, top five points, they get in. And um, and so we just had to come up with some type of tool so we could be consistent and concrete when we do this, and so I asked that if y'all could. And so, I asked that if y'all could.
How, how many students do we have in the middle college program presently?
Seven. And, and, and we, what happened last year, we didn't have a good tool. And, and so, everybody that wanted to be in it, got in it. And, and it's very expensive. And we're, so, we, I mean, we said when we started this program, we're going to do five. But we didn't, the instrument, we didn't have it in place like we wanted it. And now, this is what this is about.
So, this cleans it up.
It cleans it up, yeah. And I ask if y'all could, you know, prove it.
Need a motion to approve the Grenada High School middle college scoring tool.
Summary.
Ms. Conley, need a second.
Thank you.
Any questions? All in favor?
Ah.
Unanimous. All right, uh, item E, CSI, TSI, update.
And, and we talked a little, you know, talked about it a good bit last time. But I do want to add just a few things, you know, the CSI with the middle school, uh, some things that we've added. We have doc, uh, we have a math specialist coming in to tutor some of the, the students that are in that category and trying to build them up. And we're hiring some tutoring coaches from outside to help also. We've got a science specialist has come on board now. And we're just hiring an ELA teacher, and I think we just hired her tonight, that's going to be coming on board to help also. So, we're putting a lot of things in place, trying to build these kids up. And that's for the CSI program at the middle school. And that's the new things. I mean, we're still doing a lot of the same old things that we've been doing. And, and, and that's part of that document that we've had, that, you know, we've been sending out to you. Any questions on that part? All right, the, um, high school, the TSI part, and again, we talked about last time, they did great last year. Eighty-nine point one percent growth. And, and if we'd had that again this upcoming year, we would be, you know, get out of that TSI designation. But they went back and kind of three years and the average bumped us in, bumped us in it where we still are staying in it. And so, we are still doing a lot of the same things we did last year, and I think it, it worked. Now, we'll say we do have some new staff members in this group. Because we're talking about just, it's English two, it's basically about thirty kids that fit in this category. I mean, school improvement is basically, it's little, I think it's around four percent of the school district is what you're talking about in this group. But our biggest concern is the new staff that are in these categories we have teaching. And so, we're just putting a lot of emphasis in professional development, you know, classroom management. Because some of them are new teachers and classroom management's always, when you first start teaching, any of us, when you first start teaching, has some skills that you can pick up, it can help you out a lot. And so, we're putting a lot of emphasis in that. And content training of those standards, because it's been the first time they taught them in a lot of cases. And we've added a tutor. So, that's some of the new things that we're doing. And, and that's kind of a report here from the school improvement thing with the CSI and the TSI. Okay? That's all we got, really.
All right. Item F is superintendent's report.
Uh, there was just, um, a few comments. We just received notice from Joanne Malone, the, um, from the Department of Education, um, in regard to accreditation. And, and, um, we have the assigned accreditation status of accredited, which is what we want. And, um, we're very happy to, you know, to have that in place from the Department of Education. On the academic side, we're in the process of testing students now. Things are going quite well. We hope that they can do as well as the football team just got finished doing this past weekend. But they're working hard and they're doing well. Facilities, we're in the process of working, we're doing, we're trying to get the roofs at the vocational school and at the Daily Start Building, the entrepreneurial center. We're trying to get that in place and done. So, we have those things that are taking place. Academically, we're doing, we're doing quite well. In regard to facilities, then we are doing, uh, we're doing well also. And, um, and that's about it for the superintendent's report.
David, I know last two meetings, um, we were asking for the, the phases. Do you have those with you? The, the phase for the facilities?
Is, is that on the agenda? The phases of facilities?
Whether it's on the agenda or not, that has nothing to do with the question that I asked you. The last two meetings, we requested to have the phases that you said you were going to bring. And I'm asking, where are they? So, asking them a question has nothing to do with the question that I just asked you.
It's not, it's not on the agenda.
It may not be on the agenda, but that's what was requested the last two meetings.
I can get that and we can put it on the agenda.
When, when. We requested it, we requested it two months ago. And it was told to be here this month.
Well, that's, the agenda is set by the superintendent and the board chairman. And if it's not on the agenda, it's not, it's not for us to discuss it. But obviously, it can be added to the agenda for next meeting. That's what I want. It wasn't brought up, but.
Twice. I mean, but it's a lot of stuff that's not on the agenda that was sent. So, again, you are, are we just going by the seat of our pants? Because that's what it seems like. Because the agenda, wait a minute, I'm, wait a minute, wait a minute.
I understand that.
Oh, Keith, Jim, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. We're not asking for legal advice. We're not asking for legal, and you're legal. So, nobody's talking to you. No, nobody's talking to you. This has nothing to do with legal. This is policy. The agenda that I was sent, I've been saying, I said, I don't have that. So, I was sent an agenda. We're talking about things that are not on the agenda that we were sent seventy-two hours before the meeting. So, now we get here and you all add and change as you all see fit. But when I ask a question about something that was supposed to be here two months ago, now it's, is it on the agenda? Well, it's not on my agenda now.
But it was affected. It was, but the, the presented agenda, even though it did change from the original that was sent.
That was supposed to be sent to us seventy-two hours before the meeting, so I can have time to go over, right?
Right.
And then we, so we're adding things.
And we're presenting this agenda to accept or.
Right, and I asked the question, I said, hey, it's not, it's not on the agenda that was sent. And I went with it. So, when I'm asking a question about something that's not on the agenda that can be added two months ago, we talked about this two months ago, we talked about it last month, and here we are again in the third month. And something that David told us was going to be presented to us, we don't have it. So, I'm just asking a question. Why is this so hard? This, this isn't difficult to understand.
Yes, sir. As you know, there is a way to get a matter on the agenda. And if it's not.
Which, which was told that everything was going to be vetoed. But this is not a legal matter, but this is not a legal matter.
The chairman asked me a question.
He didn't ask you a question, you just started talking. Nobody asked you, I didn't, nobody asked you anything.
He did ask me a question.
He didn't, you just jumped in and started talking. He didn't ask you. This is not a legal matter.
And I'm responding to the, to the chairman.
Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, in response to your question, as you know, there's a way to get a matter on the agenda. If a board member wants to get it on the agenda, they can present that before the start of the meeting. It's put on there by majority vote. If it's not on there, then it is not discussed during this meeting. Otherwise, we bog us digging down to anything that comes up. So, the point is, if you want to add it to the agenda, it can be added to a future agenda. If you and the superintendent decide to do that, or a majority of the members vote to put it on the agenda. So, that's where we are. I, I would, I mean, I would like to see it added to the next agenda, just to give some kind of timeframe of projects. But I didn't catch it this time. All right, item G.
But again, but again, as legal, you just told him, you just told the president something that's not even in our policy. Our policy doesn't state that.
I just gave you a legal way to get it on the agenda.
Well, I'm just saying, well, well, that's the po, the policy is written to get it on the agenda. But you just told him another way to get him on the agenda, but that's not our policy.
I told him exactly the way.
That's not what's on our policy, Jim.
You know.
That's not on our policy. That's not what our policy says. So, if we're following, and that's been my question since the beginning, do we follow policy?
What's your policy say about getting a matter on the agenda?
The, the policy says, first, you go to the president and then you, in conjunction with the superintendent, before the meeting starts, to try to ask, to make a request to put something on the agenda.
Okay.
That is the policy.
And it wasn't added.
So, again, so again, let's go back in time because we have short-term memory. When I was attempting to do that, you, the president was advised to veto everything that is sent to him, which is against policy. So, again, how can I add something? When I tried to add, when I tried to add it, it was automatically vetoed based on the recommendation of council, which goes directly against our policy. So, how can I, as a board member, function when you all change the policy? And sometimes you all decide to go with the policy, sometimes you don't. So, how am I, as a board member, supposed to add something to the agenda when it's been automatically vetoed? This is documented because I said it back in January.
With all due respect, I never use the word veto. I did not advise the board chairman to veto anything that brought it down.
Well, that's what we're seeing.
Can I speak?
Well, that's what we're seeing.
You, you get upset when people upset, interrupt you.
I'm sorry, you're right.
Okay. There is a way to get on the agenda. It's not on the agenda tonight. And there is a process for getting on the agenda. The chairman knows that. And he just said he would ask that it be put on the agenda for the next meeting. I don't know what the argument is. I mean. And I did say that way back when it, when we first started. But I've actually, I thought we kind of agreed after that, that I would, I would.
Yeah, yeah, of course, of course, we, we did. But when I was asking, he brought up facilities. Last two meetings, we said that we were supposed to have something in front of us about the phases of facilities, and we hadn't had it. So, when he did his superintendent's report about facilities, I asked a question to say, hey, where's the paperwork on the facility so we can see it? From the last two meetings. And then you advised him on something that goes against our policy.
No, I advised him on how to get on the agenda. But he knows how, I don't have to tell the board president, he does full well to get on the agenda. And he said that it will be on the agenda next time, from what I understand. I'd like to see what our schedule looks like on additional. It needs to be on there next time. All right, disposal of special education records.
This is a process that we do annually, is disposal of our special education records. We do this in the month of January. We give, um, parents and families an opportunity, um, to come and pick up their records. Once they are no longer of useful life to us as a school district, they may be of benefits to families for them. So, I ask that you all approve, um, the disposal of special education records.
Need a motion for disposal of special education records?
I make a motion.
Motion. Ms. Conley, any questions? All in favor? Thank you. Item H is child nutrition summary report.
This is done yearly. And if you glance down at the report, it has some different categories within the report. But you can see the number of students who are on free and reduced, um, and so on. And so, you can just look and see you, if you notice, there's a, there's one section on section five through eight. And they do a verification of the process. And, um, just glance down and look at that. And then you could get a pretty good idea of our free and reduced lunch. And this is something that we must do, approve the summary report.
I need a motion to approve the child nutrition summary report for twenty-four, twenty-five.
I do have a question about this. And, and this, and this is a legal question for, uh, Attorney Keith. If, if, when approving this, uh, this document, this is, uh, is this state law? I mean, like, is this a state policy, um, as far as the, um, can it change even if we, uh, if we approve it? Can we, can we change this document later on?
And what do you mean changing the document?
For instance, I know, um, that there are some things being passed out through legislation that would almost eliminate free and reduced lunch. So, I didn't know if this was, if this kind of locked us in for this year. And if it's, and if it doesn't, then as a school board, I think we should look at the policy, um, to try to address, you know, the free and reduced lunch. Because I know, I know we're about, uh, about sixty-three percent free and reduced lunch, I know at the high school. And I know all those kids would have to pay for their lunch, uh, within the coming months. So, I didn't know if this kind of locked us into twenty-five, twenty-six? Or if this kind of could change based on the legislation that's coming down?
Well, first of all, I think this is just a, an accumulation, a, a data accumulation form. Folks who filled this out, y'all could tell me more about what the purpose behind this form is. As far as any legislation, I'm not aware of anything that is going to reduce free and reduce lunches from the state level. I don't know about the federal level, but the state level I know, because we're not the ones who set the parameters for that. But, um, we are required to fill out certain documentation to participate in the national lunch program. And I, I'm assuming that's what this is part of. This is, I think this is a federal form. Yeah, so it should be a federal form.
Which is, which is, what's, what's, which is what's changing? Is there somebody, who, who does our, who does the, uh, like the?
Food service.
Like the food service for us? Who is that?
Myra Dams.
She, she wouldn't be here to answer that question.
She is not here.
Yeah, that's who signed this. But yeah, this is, but this is a required document. It's got to be completed for us to be able to continue to participate.
Right. So, we still don't know if this locks us in for, um, like for twenty-five, for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year? Can it be revised later?
We do it every year.
Not less, I, I mean, I have no idea because of all of the legislation.
But this is the first year that, that free and reduced lunch has been threatened based on the coming administration.
I mean, I, I see what you're saying, but I think that if they change anything, it wouldn't, it would be active for the next school year. I don't think that it would come into play in the middle of a, because it's probably already budgeted for the.
For twenty-five, twenty-six, so we'll be good for twenty-five, twenty-six, is what.
Because I think that they're already budgeted for that.
Okay.
We would be good for this school year. Twenty-five starts in January, it's in the middle of the school year. And so, we'd be good for this school year. And, and this is important to approve the child nutrition summary.
And it specifically is for twenty-four, twenty-five.
Twenty-five, okay, 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 got you.
Finish out this.
Got you.
School year, not, not calendar.
All right, can I get a motion to accept the nutrition summary report for twenty-four, twenty-five?
I make a motion.
All right, Ms. Conley, any questions? All in favor? Unanimous. All right, approval of the GCTC roof bids.
Some open bids, um. Weeks ago, you see that, it was some good participation. This is a bid for a vocational school roof. You see there, we had six good bids. The low bidder being for a hundred and sixty-six thousand, one hundred dollars. And that's, uh, E. Cornell Malone Corporation, based out of Richland, Mississippi. To my knowledge, they've never done any of our work here within the school district. You see they're a little lower than, uh, the next bid there by about twenty-two thousand dollars. Uh, Malone Roofing, they're a pretty big company from what I've kind of researched them a little. They have about two hundred employees, six offices, working over multiple states. I think in twenty twenty-three, they, their gross revenues are like sixty-four million dollars. They've been in business for about fifty years or, or so. And I know Robert Zander, our architect, uh, it says he's, over the years, worked on them, with them on a couple of other projects. And everything is always, uh, gone fine there. That bid is a, a little lower than others. I think there was some, you know, checking with them to make sure what, anything that they missed. They went back and looked at it and said, well, it was something that they'd overlooked, but they thought they felt good that they could, could do that, the job for the, what they bid. And keep in mind, that hundred sixty-six thousand of something, uh, Robert Zander Architect had built in, a ten thousand dollar contingency in there. Because we could have some wet insulation on the roof that would have to be replaced, but maybe not. You know, so there's something, we could actually build less than that. And another ten thousand he built in there just in case something come up that we didn't foresee. So, if neither of those things transpire, then that, you know, what we're going to actually pay for the roof, you'd come in, you know, is with as much as twenty thousand dollars less than the hundred sixty-six thousand. So, we'd be, uh, asking you guys to approve that low bidder of a.
Just verification, the one sixty-six, one hundred, that's assuming for that fifty square foot of wet.
What that, what that, on the side is there, that's, that's what they would charge per square foot for taking out and replacing any wet insulation. You know, they bid per, per square foot, but, and you see it's a little different, see some of the other bids? But if you read up there, it says fifty square foot. So, really fifty times five would be two hundred and fifty would be their bid, which is kind of in line with what some of the other bids are.
They were all about the same, weren't they?
Yeah, so all that part. And that's just, you know, if there is some, I think they've done some drilling and they saw that there was some wet insulation, so you won't know, you know, how much till, until you tear that roof off. so you won't know, you know, how much until you tear that roof off.
Okay. All right, can I get a motion to approve the bid from E. Cornell Malone Corporation for replacing the roof on G C T C?
Summary.
Conley, second. Dr. Turner.
Take it.
Any questions? All in favor? Item J, approval of change order.
This was another bid, you know, that we had boarded recently, approved in recent months for the asbestos mold abatement at Paperville down on Fifty Corporate Road. The, that original bid was two hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars. Once they got on the roof, you know, there were some materials there that were to be removed. That I think, once they got up there and got to working with it, they were able to obtain permission from the Mississippi Department of Environmental Quality that instead of removing that, it could be encapsulated. So instead of cutting it all out or grinding it off, it, it could be, go, it could be covered with an elastometric coating, you know, everywhere that it was, because that roof is going to ultimately be rerouted, so it's all going to be gone over. So basically, this, this contract is being reduced by two thousand and eighty-nine dollars, and that's the difference in the cost for not, what they built in there for, not removing the asbestos from the roof, but for, again, covering it with, in the means that the Department of Environmental Quality allowed.
Do we need to approve this?
Just need you guys to approve the change order reducing that contract by that two thousand and eighty-nine dollars.
All right. Need a motion to approve the change order.
Take a motion.
Motion, second. Ms. Conley, any questions? All in favor? unanimous? All right, item K is approval of new bank account.
Yeah, what, what we had to do here, and we had to do this a, a year or so ago, too, this is a, that Senate Bill thirty fifteen C T E funding that we received. Some of the requirements of us is I have to do a quarterly report, you know, back showing where the money is and what we spent, and have all that documentation. And, and one thing that they asked for is that we send them a bank statement, so that, that five million dollars of funding that we have received, you know, again, from that Senate Bill, a legislation there, it needs to be in its own bank account. So this is just creating a separate bank account that will house just those funds. And we've done something comparable for the three million dollars that we received a year or so ago on the, was that House Bill six oh three money. So this just helps me to be able to keep it all separate, and that's why I'm reporting to them every quarter, you know, showing where we are with the money and what we spent and all that.
It's all the way down.
Makes that easier, so that's just.
Trying to find it in the.
Oh, yeah, because you see all these funds and everything else in, in our main, main accounts, and that's, that's the purpose of that.
All right, need a motion to approve the separate bank account for the C T E company.
Summary.
Ms. Conley, please, second.
Take it.
Dr. Bradley, any questions? All in favor? unanimous? All right, item L, approval of service contract.
Yeah, this is a, it is a, a, a service contract. This isn't a, a, a real big thing, but the company that we use, I think, for years, which is Dickerson Petroleum, to, to monitor, what this relates to, as I understand it, Benji Britt had, had, had shared this much with me, and I'll share it with you guys. With our in-ground fuel and gasoline tanks at the bus shop, there are some wells there, little, you know, just holes in the ground, basically, that will contain water. And they had that water tested to make sure that those tanks aren't leaking, you know, and it's something that we have to do, you know, for environmental purposes. It would quite be by the state every month. That testing has to be done. Well, Dickerson Petroleum, Petroleum is getting out of that business, so this is another company that'd be coming and doing this every month. And, and I scheduled down here, this is what we, what we paid. I meant to read, anyway, it was a schedule I created. It looks like we paid Dickerson last year about two thousand dollars for this service in a year. You know, so I expect it to be comparable, you know, with what, with what they're going to be doing. So just asking you guys to approve us to enter into this service contract, that this company would come in here and, you know, do that required testing.
How often do they check it? Quarterly?
Every month, I believe.
All right. Need a motion to approve the service contract to test the water wells around the fuel tanks at the bus shop.
Take a motion.
Dr. Turner, second. Ms. Conley, any questions? All in favor? Chief Analyst. All right, item N, approval to advertise for Chromebook bids.
Is that me or? This is, of course, Chris Corbett, our technology director, is the one, you know, that's been making this request. And all we're asking you guys to do at this point is allow us to advertise, you know, to be able to, and, and start the process of conducting a reverse auction. This is something we're doing every year, you know, to replace our Chromebooks. You know, Chris is estimating it to be, meaning fifteen hundred, they'll need to be replaced for this next year. And you see on there, it's not just the Chromebook, you know, there's some other, you know, peripheral things that go with it, I guess. You got the license you have to buy, the case it goes in, and of course, you got to have some insurance on it, you know, because, man, a lot of these things, they get beat up, you know, pretty, pretty good. So, and, and so what'll happen is we'll advertise or conduct a reverse auction, and we'll be coming back to the board with all the bids for your approval. And he'll be trying to get those in, in the late spring, early summer, so we can get them all set up and ready to go to be issued out first of the next year.
And this is part of where we started trying to replace the third every year.
Remember, we buy the third grade, the sixth grade, the ninth grade, you know, every year, and then the seniors will have to do them about every, every third, every, every three.
Spread that expense out.
Yeah, and it works pretty good, you know, like I said, that, Chris is kind of, I think, a lot of the I T directors across the state kind of share some, some ideas about how to best, you know, make all that work, but, you know, pretty much a child will be issued a, a Chromebook in the third grade, keep it third, fourth, and fifth. And they go to sixth grade, they get another one, keep it sixth, seventh, and eighth. Go to ninth grade, keep it ninth, tenth, and eleventh. That'll be theirs, you know, for their three years. Then when they're senior, Chris was trying to do one that's a little bit nicer for the seniors, and also they'll just cycle through the senior classes for three years till it's time to replace them. So that's kind of.
So we're just proving, advertising for the.
Yeah, just to advertise now, you know, get some bids to come back, then you'll prove the.
All right, need a motion to approve the advertising for Chromebooks. Ms. Conley, yes, second.
Second.
Take it.
Dr. Turner, any questions? All in favor? unanimous? All right, item N, declaration of junk and surplus equipment.
I'll send the list there. It's not too terribly long. A lot of technology, some old brake lanes and such. It's been around for twenty years or so. Think it's on there.
All right. Need a motion to accept declaration of junk and surplus?
I make a motion to approve list of junk and surplus.
Any questions? All in favor? unanimous? All right, O, deletion of fixed assets. Need a motion to deletion of fixed assets? First, need a second?
Second.
Dr. Turner.
Take it.
All in favor? unanimous? All right, item P, review of financial statements and activity funds.
Sorry, let me scroll down here, I guess. Yeah, maybe we'll go through these. This is a, first one up is our cash balance there at the end of October. See all the different buckets of cash that we have, so that amount there was the reconciled, the book balance at the end of October. I'll see where we started the month with that amount there in, uh, district maintenance. And again, the purpose of this is to help us kind of monitor cash we have there in district maintenance, because that's generally where most of the payroll expenses and other operational expenses, everything from, you know, transportation is, is in there, all of our maintenance and, and all the support and services are going through there. And again, as I've said before, it does, that balance goes down in there, you know, every month until we hit along here in, in, uh, January or so. You see this line, ad valorem collections? You see, it's, it's pretty low right now. You look at, you know, so far this year, we've only collected, you know, less than a million dollars in ad valorem. And, you know, our request is for about eight million, so it's going to be a little bit more, it'll all come in and hit January, February, and March. So it's just kind of a tool to help the district keep up with where we are cash-wise, and make sure we're going to be able to make it through the year, because some schools have issues with that. This is budget status report. Again, you look at this one, you got your year-to-date collected revenue and year-to-date expenditures. Revenue right there, expenditures right here. And that's the budgeted revenues and expenditures for the year. You know, our budget seems, you know, a lot of this construction we're doing from the middle school to this C T E spending and all, you know, that we've spent it all this year. All likelihood, you know, we won't spend all that money within this year, so these numbers are a little bit higher. If you look at the gross, um, revenues and gross expenditures there, and also transfers between funds are also included in those totals. So that drives those amounts up a little bit, with the actual revenue, net revenues and expenditures would be. And the last one, and this is just your general funds, you know, all the cash that's in the general funds. General funds, everything from the district maintenance fund, to all the sixteen section funds, to the, um, activity funds, and a few little eyeballings we got, the lab funds in there, you know, such as that. And then, um, special revenue funds, and a lot of cash in those funds. You got a little in, uh, in, uh, like, food service would be the biggest one. But again, just through, y'all have any questions about any of those for me?
Can I get a motion to file and receive the financial statements and activity funds as presented?
I make a motion.
Second. Dr. Turner, any questions? All in favor? We have zero public comments for this meeting. Need a motion to pay our bills?
Make a motion.
Ms. Conley, second. Dr. Bradley, all in favor of paying the bills?
There's no one on public comment?
No, there wasn't. It's six, five. There's nobody signed, I don't think. We picked it up at six.
Okay.
The executive session?
Yeah, I make a motion. We go into executive session.
We'll make some motions. We go into executive session. Do I have a second?
Do you have to state the purpose for the executive session?
Well, you know, we've got.
We have.
You got to, you got to figure out what the purpose is that come out. All right, we made a motion for executive session. All in favor?
Uh.
All right, unanimous? All right.
All right, Dr. Bradley, we're going to call you on a, on a, in just, back in just a minute, okay?
I'm good.
All right, thank you.
I thank you.
I thank you.
Wait close executive session with no actions recorded.
Did y'all announce?
No action, we finish the second session, we all pull the guard.